It's okay?
Yes, we could open please do.
Maybe because it was rotated the other way?
Uh huh. We're live. Yeah. Let's see if we can put the caption.
Canela 97.7 FM, we're broadcasting live. The port number 137 Ali Busheds. My name is John Zaya Wanmuse Teka. Today, we're hosting officers from council. Now, the publications officer. Name, uh, hehe, name, uh, the surname will be shared later. Okay, name, uh, um. Name, uh, Nsamba. Then we have Kombi Chavala, the social economic planner for Undazi Town Council. And today we'll be discussing Cash for Work. Cash for Work. Uh, what is it? You want to go to the bank? But Cash for Work. You want to go to the bank? You want to go to the bank? You want to go to the bank? Ah, ah, you know, you want to go to the bank? I'm not going to go to the bank. I'm not going to go to the bank. I'm not going to go to the bank. Hello, I'm sick of it. I'm sick of it. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 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 And now, ah, what? Do you understand? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, John. Good afternoon, listeners. Muriwari Monsi.
Oh, Muriwari Monsi. Okay, um, to start with, since, um, what is Cash for Work? Maybe briefly tell us what Cash for Work is?
Okay. So, Cash for Work. Nsamba, nine in Kazi, seven thirty, so that it's in Verane. If we not full, I want to make sure they understand at the end of this, uh, interaction. So, Cash for Work is a program that, uh, was introduced, uh, due to the drought that we experienced in 2023, 2024. To call it, I'm not going to go. Although, I'm going last week, when they were in the long, I'm going, I'm going to go. I'm going to come back to, at least, I'm going to go harvest. I'm going to go, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Yo, yo, Peter, why? Uh huh. So, Cash for Work, the program, I'm going to let the government. I'm going to go, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. My family is going to go. I'm going to go. Affected in the drought. I'm going to go. 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 Because at that time, although I'm not here, so I'm going to go. I'm going to go. So, this program, me, it, me, I can't be, I can't be, program, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Cash for Work, meaning, to go pass in the drama, in the, in the seven. So, I want to, I'm going to go. 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 Then, um, Cash for Work, it's, it's, um, focuses on, uh, community projects. Uh, it's aimed at also improving the hygiene. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. It also focuses on local infrastructure. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Uh huh. So, I Cash for Work, the program, I'm going to go. 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 But, it programs, here, I'm going to go. 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 Social Cash Transfer. Uh huh. So, it program, I Cash for Work, need, uh, need, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm, 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 I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Uh huh. Uh huh. So, it program, near, near, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. For a short period of time, not that, uh, permanent employment, uh uh. But, near, what do you want, citizen or what do you want, resident? I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. In America, between eighteen to fifty-nine, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Cash for Work.
Okay. But, I'm going to go. 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 The social cash transfer, Jack.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Cash for Work. Okay. Since the capital, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Uh, I'm going to go. Um, age group, very big, I'm going to go. 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 Why they put a limit to fifty-nine is because, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Sixty years, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Social Cash Transfer, although, I'm going to go. And then, to my, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. WDCs, if you go, it's, as a local authority, it's in color, I'm going to go. But, it's in the moment, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Then, my C-Wax, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. My WDCs, I'm going to go. Um, I'm going to go. Cash for Work, I'm going to go. So, I'm going to go. Transfer. So, my communities, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Database, because, I'm going to say, uh, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Database. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Social Cash Transfer, although, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Although, I'm going to go. Affected, because, it program, it's the target, I'm going to go. 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 And then, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. So, I'm going to go. My communities, my C-Wax, my WDCs, I'm going to go. 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 Then, I'm going to go. To say, it's in the my head teachers, it's in the my teachers, my community. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Just as an example, I'm going to go. But, C-Wax, I'm going to go. Ah, I'm going to go. At least, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. And cheat, in that allocation, but, my C-Wax, my WDCs, I'm going to go. At community level, that know, who they are staying with, and I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Benefit program.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, now, how much do participants typically earn?
Okay. Uh, Cash for Work, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Six hundred within one month. So, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Six hundred, watcha. And they are working for a maximum of ten days, only a month. So, meaning, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Because the rate that is used is sixty, watcha, per day. So, when you multiply sixty, watcha, by ten days, it's in color, six hundred, watcha. So, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Six hundred, watcha, within a month.
Okay.
Yes.
Six hundred.
Six hundred, watcha.
Name, uh, I'm going to go.
Uh, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Six hundred, watcha, uh huh, within a period, yeah, ten days.
But, in color, range, yeah, one month, in I'm going to go.
One month.
More than one month?
No, uh, the six hundred, they mean, I'm going to go. Uh, Cash for Work, in continuous program. To my, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. February, they will receive salaries. But, I'm going to go. Seventy, twenty days, a month, I'm going to go. I have to only work for ten days, depending, I'm going to go. Six hundred, watcha. So, six hundred, I'm going to go. Maximum, that I'm going to go, can receive, within one month. So, if, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Opportunity, after, if I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. A month, enough. But, your six hundred, that is the limit, that individual, I'm going to give, one month.
I think, I'm going to go. 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 Yeah, as a Londoner, have you seen any progress over this, this, the social cash transfer?
Okay, uh, so.
The Cash for Work, also, Cash for Work.
Yes, yes. Uh, I'll speak as a person who's been in Undazi for a long time, and too much to interact with my community members, I'm going to go, on different programs. So, it Cash for Work, zone, I'm going to go, for the people, especially, in my rural areas, I'm, uh, I'm going to go. Twenty twenty-three, go by twenty twenty-four, uh, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. So, I'm going to go, uh, the community, I'm going to go. Most of them are dependent on farming. So, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. Uh, I'm going to go. 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 But, I'm going to go. Program, for the, uh, relief, on this, in the sense that, I'm going to go. 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 As I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. And then, probably, different level, as a local authority, we've seen, my communities, I'm going to go. Younger children, go, we're not, and, uh, they are using community, uh, spirit, because, I'm going to go. When they go, my roads, I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. But, with the coming, uh, of Cash for Work, I'm going to go. 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 Not my big bridges, come back to my food, bridge, to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. I'm going to go. And then, I'm going to go. 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 Uh, yeah, I'm going to go.[655.54]
Ma simkati. Venanguzadebo inenasosana simkati, so imawajoni nishtenkoni buangi, nishtenkoni register. Somuza boaku kanso kuja, zinanda kulembanatindi mawajoni. But pajanga tifunoli pila pajapa zina papuera tiya inuwa nema. Mhona ka, so imapaimentia sos isiyachta buangi, siya inda through. Then footi challenge inangu yamiti peza niwakwati, muntuka segula eto money account, ukasegula pajaya eto money squati. Nikuisiya chabu pagombe kete tindarama zizi zingelima. Wa eto wama pasa kukapiru, ka is it twenty four, forty eight hours, I think eh. Kua kweati, uki kemon dalama kuchta active, tijaka. Olo five kuacha chabu, so letinkalecha be active, muziukati iya accountisha buangi is serenza. Mayenangu zapesa tivana segulisa, mevena segulisa one month ago. But swaita mon dalama, so evazuati, olo kayenda pajoka, sese sa usis dikodiwa eto. Isakuletela tawazina nuandani niwa John. But indarama kuja tikatuma, isetikachu kama account muriwa kanso kutisikayenda, muri janaamba. Zaka nezahanginga because janaamba siri buangi, siri active. I think thema challenges yamiti, tifesi ngaku yamne. Then footi, venangu, ubesa afuni deyache angkari lapo chabu, afuna chaka zingo serenza eva mui neka ntyachta buangi. Afuna kazifora chabe eka, I think the challenge inangu, tifesi ngaku. Venangu wa na monga, mamezna kambila po yampa kuti Cash for Work, ni short term employment, si long term employment. Because ifun kusti benefit went one bit. So I think my challenges, ndiamiti tifesi ngaku, na tipempa kwa wa, tungati wachta register. Ah ma phone, bakasensa ma NRC ya o, wachta make sure kuti mobile money ya o, ili buangi, ili activated.
Okay, uh nisambo konka one by one, mamele makambila madam. Um first what about information? So party information, wasa tandizika buangi, antuwa jawa many information, party information gap. Otikambeka benani irete footi direct kuli mo, after finding these problems, have you gone back to work on it?
Ninga kupa se monga example, chistango, lelo, kwenze meeting, district commission abatu, na antuwa council, na ma WDCs, benzo fno chstanda standa, kulema mawajoni, bakazuwa nteva serenza Cash for Work, i moe muzuavelling, message ya fig.
Kuma programzi asotimakumanana ma community members. And ah kubamba chilungamo, ma community members wa mulundazi, niwabuina, chifuka tikaitana meeting. Olo nikonya ngoa kutari, tikambeku tutimira, nikulunewa, ma community members wabuila, especially wasimai. So tisense samaplatmo from dia so, kuza wandu badi, ma issues ya Cash for Work. And then, um the other thing that we are doing is now, nisidapo chimozie, olovivili, olovitatu, and we're grateful to our community leaders because, ah kuyamba party wa council chair, party wa DC, party wa MP. Because they know about the information, about the challenges that we're facing. It's easy for them when they go to the communities to also tell these communities. And tisense sanama chiefs, because the chiefs carry a lot of weight in a community like Lundazi. It's, it's good when a chief calls for a meeting because all the community members are going to be there. Even compared to when I call for a meeting. So we use those people also to disseminate this information. So Cash for Work is still Cash for Work. And um even improving to do a better thing so that tomorrow, we don't have a lot of problems with our community members.
Hmm hmm. Chisongo chikuru ta mene na vela pota antuwa kati, ifetiri kumunzi. Bafuna kati direma sukupamutu antuwa kamba uti, bye pila. Ijikuku maji ya boela oku, database. Wa ife, database, wa mene aru kumunza vela, oh, ta tenga database. Evasame, database, ah ba tiba tiba database, desegena si, na di dalama.
Ya.
So okay, oti dueska ben para para pa database, wa yena kala fumi rapo tudepa database.
Ni zona, kuma angala ma issues ya kuti inezina, wanani chosa apain.
Okay. Um tiwone av.
Batuma?
Batuma, eh tiwone.
Tindele.
Hmm hmm. Hello? 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 Netuweki? Okay, kandakunge kuyoe, bakumbenge, mwa mwezenge, eh eh, pizeng, eh, pizan madam.
Eh eh, so tenzo kamba parinkaniya database. So ise kulo ko authority, timalandira ma zina kuchoka kuma communities, ma Sewax na ma WDCs. So kambidi, mntuwa kabue na funso tusese, sina landire ndalama. Isse kuche kinga nikujeki nga zina ya, ngatibana reta, bakua tkuao.
Hmm hmm.
So bakua tkuao, ngatibana reta zina, that's now where we go back to the word to address that issue. But most times, we trust the Sewax and the WDCs. Kutipasa information ya mntuwa diense, wa nasevenza kumunity kuja. Ka istinga kwanise, ta indalelo, tarembesa ma zina, ta indakua duktarembesa ma zina, that's also a cost. But that is why in the guidelines, wanayika tusema Sewax na ma WDCs, gankala na wantu. Bazambo reta ma zina kuli ise, ise tangene tachabe for payments.
Okay, um but there, yamene yo database, na data benelele mani invested. Uh mame timalangala ma communities, muri voti tikavambi.
Yeah.
Eh eh, voti tikavambi rivija, mame timalamba voti tikavija, nukuti, inenangene na pa Cash for Worki, na rembesa.
Yeah.
Aye, ulembesa nasenza ku one, two, three, four, five, nibora the eight. Aye, the eight ja, pesa uti, wa mene na niremba uja si supervisor tayambana.
Ah, but you know.
Waleka uwa ne, uti uwa neki, eh ka inedina kuyo na garaku ntsi. Wera kuja utu uisa nasenze. Uteka pesu kuja, eh mahain mursu.
Yeah.
Pesu uja uja foren, tama sa kambeketu, si.
Hmm hmm.
Ah si, amba kutamanje imaga kukanso, tama sa. Um ba kaya, ah, da kanso, ah, niwa mariri, hmm, tumajtika utu. Eh venangu kapa na fulana, pokai ri, muidoshi tikadu kambidi, atu ulembaka, bistumbari bago. Yeah, um. Banema, parima o.
Ah, awoe, mwa mwele lundo ele chabe. Eh so neamneayo, kuli na mawajoni mwa boela, wa uti, eventika checkinga na isekua tufesa ndalama, zinatumiika, mamezna kambidi. So manje venangu, wame, wame ti, tikamba, tindarama tinatuma. I think wakasukwensako kuche kinga komebi na kwayateo, katumila wayateo, kuti yavewantuwa kamba, wanantu mila ndalama. Wa eto wama angala na yoma record, zina kuti explain, wa mashta explain. So ngatibachta noticea tindarama zafika pa zihanginga, ka iri, zika chokamanja muatu isi. Zainda muzina mawajoni, shiza muzina mawajoni, stinga endo kuli wa eto, kwa mboza ndrama ya mawajoni, si sumna, sumna fikirize. So weveka, wakazi tengamo mbadi, yenda buangi, kwayateo, kuti tadi man kuli ndalama zang.
Okay, uh then venangu funso party, kuli paymin zina ngutengra po ndrama, unlike, ga iman katega database, ga itimo na venangu ngote zidja, zotu zanggo kuenda ku, pa ma phone uti, ah, tusipasi uti pa paper table, kuli beisha?
Um according kuma guidelines, ah I think inangala nilamulo, yakuti ma financial officers are not supposed to draw cash now, there's a risk in cash.
Hmm hmm.
So nipase kochi example, bako kanaka back ndalama kuchoka mubanki, muja kaya nipaiindu. Wakati bofka pa kapena nipachani, bakati bofka pa redjochika, or bakati bofka pa zianankachinga, kaba kika jawa babela, matu antuwa zavimvela i. Tusese, zidja ndalama zemnasenze la, wanaba yenze mbagi ya wa accountant. So wa government, wanayikako malamulo yakutimange ya tandzileko antu, to promote transparency, accountability, and to avoid, because polipila pajja. Mzakala uza wa accountant, polipila, banani uzakuti nichosepo fifty kuacha, niwa pasire na veve varima. As agreed by the WDCs, the community members, kujava headmen, and the Sewax.
Well specialized.
Yes, those that are, yes, those are that are specialized. But we haven't received my concerns pertaining to those that force themselves on the program. So far, we haven't received those complaints from the WDCs and the Sewax.
Okay. Zero seven seven six thirty seven twelve ninety three, zero nine six nine nine two eight eight five eight, visa va lima, para mwa fika, muarima. Kulema insistanima fumbo para munawa fufuwa na antuwa ava, inenkute mura. Eh eh, niri jahi machero, eh ya cha. Hello? Moa, tandrambo, atadansiamku inbirangu?
Okay, this is Carson, calling.
Mister Carson, yes, is it a contribution or a request?
It's not a question, I'll take your question.
Please go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Madam Gold.
Good afternoon, Mister.
Good afternoon, thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Tiara.
Good afternoon, how are you today?
Fine, thank you.
Great.
Just a quick question, uh I'm following your program, and I just want to, just find out a few things about the new Cash for Work.
Okay.
Uh lately, I start by appreciating what you're doing there, helping our people, they are really appreciate. Um my first question is, uh, uh I hear you said Cash for Work is just for a short period of time, so I want to find out, how sustainable is it? And lately, if I didn't get you correctly, like, um, how do we see, where do we see it in the next few years, probably the next two years or so? Thank you.
Okay, alright. Eh, zero seven seven six thirty seven twelve ninety three, zero nine six nine nine two eight eight five eight, visa va lima, para mwa fika, muarima. Eh eh, fumbani, para wa fuma, abanba, anipandi, yatangba kutumura na ma fumbo, warimu fumbani. Ma fumbo ayoye, muka tange tifumbenge, eh eh. Zero seven seven six thirty seven twelve ninety three, zero nine six nine nine two eight eight five eight. I saw the book, you wrote.
Okay.
Hmm hmm. Bakapuera tisa tika. Gati muzambi la niunku, ka niunku.
Okay, so, uh I think Cash for Work, um initially, nisofun kano sera, but.
Tiwone av, kuchi ngangu. Hello?
Hello?
Moa, tandrambo, atadansiamku inbirangu?
I'm going to call.
Masuka na dada zulu, ni fumbo nindemanga?
Ni fumbo.
Fumba na dada.
Yeah, na dada.
Eh eh.